Are there any additions or variations to the motion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Robie, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. We've also got a few items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the public comment and...
We have two to sign, Mr. Frank Keenan.
Okay. Frank? If you'll state your name in three minutes.
My name is Frank Keenan. I reside on Victor Street. Just wanted to little shout out to the Utilities Department, Specialty Electric Group. They had a low power line. Called them, the guy come out, we both agreed. He said he'd be back the next day and before I knew it, it was done. They raised the line about four foot for service both my house and my neighbor's house. I called Spectrum and then ATT. Spectrum's good, I'm a whole driver ATT. But that's about me because I don't have ATT service. Number two is update on the city park on North Haspen. Got any information on that? And when that project is done, has anyone thought about renaming it to Fisher Park, Memorial Park, Veterans Park? There's a whole bunch of names I think would be appropriate.
Yeah. And we actually, hopefully sometime in March or April, will have the final design ready to go to bed. It's been a unique project because of the water.
Just water?
Yeah, just a little bit. But yeah, so hopefully you'll see some dirt being turned this summer.
Okay, all right. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hall, Danny Hall?
Okay, Alan. Three minutes.
Yes, sir. Well, Mayor and City Council and City Attorney and Manager, just over what's been going on, just got a question to you for one thing. Are you ashamed of Honorable President Donald Trump? Because I'm actually ashamed of y'all. He's come out and said that there are only two sexes and yet we wouldn't do it in our city or county or our state. He said that boys could not be in females bathrooms or in sports and we didn't protect them on their own in the city or county or our state. So now they're drawing up things to fall behind, but I'm, like I said, I'm ashamed that we didn't stand to just common sense. I also want to address to you and things that's coming out. And things was put on the TV and everything else, believe the science. And yet the science today is showing more and more of the lies of, we'll just more or less say, the previous administration and the highest paid person, Dr. Fauci, by the federal government. But children has been wounded at 212% greater after taking the shot and having disorders as ADHD, epilepsy, seizures, brain inflammation and learning disorders. There's other ones that another area is calling for a halt of the injections, particularly in children. Another one even by Pfizer on reports said after they took the shot, four days, there was 1,200 deaths, 42,000 injuries and nearly half of these were 18 to 50, which didn't really affect too seriously about even if they had that sickness. So even Moderna is coming out now and saying that they got the vaccine before the virus was even released to the world. So I know the whole problem that wearing this mask and it was put, even pushed here in the city and everything else, is that we're scared to die. And the Bible says, "A pointed man wants to die and after that's a judgment." And so no matter what any of us do, we all gonna die. So, but when we start forcing people against their will to wear masks, take shots and everything else, then we violated the Constitution, freedom, justice and liberty. So just ask you that all of you would consider before they do another planned epidemic that all these things, that you have a different outcome, a different thought and not be so scared for your lives and see and even taking action following Donald Trump President to protect their children in the schools from the shot and from this sexual disorder that's going on. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I'll turn it over to Brian, or Chief Green, for a special recognition.
Mayor, we've had a busy day, so we didn't get a chance to go home and change into our dress and uniforms and we do apologize to John who looks a lot better than we do. We are here to present John his intermediate certificate. The State Training Standards recognized two certificates for law enforcement in North Carolina, intermediate certificate and an advanced certificate. It's based on years of service, training as well as education can take place at some of the training points we received. So it's a combination of things to get this. It's not easy to get. Requires a lot of work and we would like to present John with his intermediate certificate and the, well, I'm sorry, I'm tired. So, but we would like to present him with intermediate certificate from Training Standards.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I'd like to ask Jamel Farley to come forward, please.
Oh, and Mary Francis, I hadn't known we'd want to have two. Well, yeah. But this is a special day and the city has honored every February to recognize Black History Month. And I thought I was just gonna be talking to Jamel and I had been picking on him earlier, but now that I see Mary Francis, I'll be nice, okay? But whereas during Black History Month, we honor the extraordinary contributions made by African Americans through the history of our republic and we renew our commitment to liberty and justice for all. And whereas during Black History Month, we recognize the achievement of African Americans and their role in shaping history along with the contributions that African Americans have made to enhance the economic, cultural, spiritual and political development of our country. And there's a whole lot more there, but now therefore, the Lincoln City Council does hereby proclaim and declare the month of February as Black History Month in Lincoln, North Carolina and further encourages all citizens to observe the month with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities.
I can shake your hand, Jamel.
We appreciate you, Mayor and Richie and all council for doing this because we do have a lot of rich black history in Lincoln County from the eastern to the western and in between. We have history standing next to me as she was the first African American elected official on the council. So we thank you, thank you for your support and hope to make things better in the near future. Thank you.
And let me add to that. If I'm not badly mistaken, Mary Francis was not only the first African American elected to City Council, but she's the only person that has ever been elected to a position in Lincoln County. So...
But not the only one. Well, it's more to come.
Not the last.
It's more to come. She's the first and won't be the last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll say this, Jamel and I go back so far, oh gosh, ever since he was a kid. So I have earned the right to pick on Jamel.
Some, most of them are my teachers. Mr. Johnson, I know who it is.
Thank you all. Okay, next item on the agenda is public hearing and I'll open up the public hearing and turn it over to Jean.
Good evening, how are you all tonight? This is currently, I'm sorry, the existing zoning is neighborhood business. This property is located on North Carolina Highway 27. It doesn't have an address, but it's four different parcels which are listed here. The proposed zoning would be a conditional rezoning to general manufacturing and commercial conditional district. It's these three lots, they're currently vacant. You can see that by the brown color, they're already zoned commercial, it's just neighborhood business. And the proposed use would be for a warehouse for storage for delivery of incontinence and nutrition products throughout North Carolina. This is an aerial where you can kind of see the lots a little bit better and how they sit. We're, these 27 splits and to the left it's 150 and to the right is 27 and there's the bank. I think there's an insurance office, Bugbusters is here. So the left side is predominantly commercial and the right side is predominantly residential. That's just a street view of the empty lot. This one I just did it so you can kind of see the commercial business, the church and the insurance and then it's this lot here. And then I just did an aerial from Google so you can kind of see what businesses are there. And this area with the trees is the area where we're gonna be talking about. It does back up to, sorry, I can't hear, right up top of my head. Arcadia Heights Road, sorry about that. So this is Arcadia Heights Road and that's just a view from that road. Currently, the land use plan shows this in the neighborhood business and planned business area. We do feel that it's consistent with those areas when you read the descriptions. So we do not recommend amending the land use plan, we do feel like it's consistent with that. And you can see the colors, the back three lots are in the neighborhood business and the front lot is in the planned business. I'm gonna switch the screen just so you can see, but it is, we'll look at the site plan in a minute in closer detail, but it would be an 11,990 square foot building. It would have eight regular parking spaces, two accessible parking spaces, one loading dock, three to five employees. It's for storage and distribution of medical supplies. The hours would be Monday through Friday and they're business hours, I think he said seven to four. So no late nights. Right now, they only have one tractor trailer per month and five to six box trucks per month. And they do show on here that in the future, they might potentially add an accessory structure behind it, just an extra storage building, but that's not in the plans, in the immediate plans. And I'm just gonna get out of this one and just show you a closer up of the plan. That's not working. You can see they would come off at 27 and when you come straight in, there would be the loading dock and the trucks would be able to back into the parking area and get out easily. It shows the building, the parking spaces. They would have a sidewalk out front. And it's set pretty far back off the road. That first lot is pretty much just gonna be open space and then the driveway and parking with the building set towards the rear. Any questions about the site plan?
Is that under your jurisdiction, the Sheriff's Department?
That is in the ETJ, I believe. Let's see, actually. Yeah, it is Lincoln County Sheriff's Department. It would be serviced by us for water, their sewer would be private, their electrics through Duke, solid waste would be a private vendor, but it would be the Lincoln City Fire Department.
Let me stop at the corner right there, 150, 27.
There were several conditions of approval from the staff review committee. I've got them listed in your packet. We're not gonna go all over all of them, but it's usually, you know, it's the standard, just meeting the ordinance requirements for screening landscaping, parking lot landscaping. We ask that they leave as many wooded areas as possible and that they'll show that on their plan. They will need an erosion control plan and submit that to Danielle at the county. NCDOT would require a driveway permit and an encouragement agreement for utilities. There are a couple things we wanted labeled on the site plan. They would need to meet the requirements of Appendix D of the fire code. They would need an approved water supply on site before they have combustible materials on site and they need to coordinate with the fire marshal and any requirements for fire suppression. Our city public works did not make comments because it is in the ETJ, so it would not be there on streets. And then Water Resources said that they would need a water line extension permit from NCDQ and install a water line to connect the existing water line in front of East Highway 27. This is a conditional zoning, it would have an expiration date of five years from the date of approval. Any adjustments that don't affect the overall layout of the plan and their technical nature, we would let whatever department made that comment approve the change. If there were changes on the site plan that affected, if it moves the building closer to the road or changed the density or changed the size, it would come back to City Council for approval. We have to look at the statements of proposed consistency and reasonableness. So the Lincoln City Land Use Plan does show this in the neighborhood business and planned business as we talked about earlier. It is consistent with the land use plan because it expands commercial development along East Highway 27 and it's reasonable because it develops vacant land that is currently underutilized and it reuses an existing property that's already zoned commercial. If you did choose to deny it, you would need a statement to support that and it's the reason I just said that the use is not desirable in that area and therefore reasonable denial. Planning Board did vote to approve this six to zero in favor of recommended approval and they recommend the following actions. Recommend approval of the rezoning of the property from neighborhood business to GMC conditional district. Approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness for approval of the rezoning request and that the zoning would be effective upon assigned conditions of approval. Any questions for me?
The existing zoning and zoning we're looking to change it to, what would you say are the key differences between those two zones?
Neighborhood business, it's typically smaller sized buildings, but you could have, like in neighborhood business, you can have a convenience store, it just can't be open, you can't sell gas past midnight. There's just a different variety of uses. GMC typically is a wider variety of industrial type uses, but when you do these conditional zonings, it makes them adhere to what this site plan says. So it would be restricted to that 11,900 square foot building. If you wanted to put a condition on the hours, you could, if the condition follows it, that's up to you. I don't have a condition on the hours, I just went with what he said that they would be, but we did not put in a condition for approval. And if it were more residential, if it were surrounded by residential, but it's on 27 headed east and it is, the left side is predominantly commercial and I think that you'll see East Main expand that direction like for commercial projects. And the applicant is here if you have any questions for him.
Any other questions? Buddy, do you want to speak?
Not unless you have questions. Jean said it a lot better than I can.
And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Jill, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve as recommended by the staff.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is our audit report and I'm gonna turn it over to Pam so if she wants to make...
3A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was about to leave that to John Dankoff. How in the world could I do that? Okay, John, it's all yours.
My station. Just can't leave that off.
I've been wanting to ignore John for years.
Good evening, good evening. I'm here, it's my honor tonight to come before you to present a request for a Lincoln City Industrial Incentive Grant. Now I'm representing a Lincoln City existing industry, the name of the company is Spantec. Spantec is located at 352 North Central Boulevard. Spantec manufactures expanded metal sheets, coals and component parts. This incentive request is for the construction of a 20,000 square foot warehouse addition, installation of a new 10-foot expanded metal grating line and a new stamping press. And the agreement would read that, "Honor before February 5th, 2025, Spantec shall begin in construction of a building addition and equipment expansion. Within two years dated this agreement, Spantec should make an investment in machinery and building expansion of $3,850,000, of which $3,205,000 will qualify for incentives of the Lincoln City Industrial Incentive Grant policy. Within two years dated this agreement, Spantec will also provide at least four new jobs at such sites paying an average weekly wage of $1,000 including benefits. Then upon approval of this request, the city will provide $12,018.75 per year in grants after all the taxes are paid and the investment is made. This will be a five-year period after the project's completion. This is a Level 2 incentive grant for this type of project." And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of John? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the economic incentive grant for Spantec.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can I ask if you would do it in two different, one's approve the resolution to do it and then a second motion to approve the agreement itself.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion by Robie, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Now I entertain a motion to approve the incentive grant.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John. Now, I was trying to leave poor John out. Carol, I'll let Pam introduce you and say whatever she wants to about the audit.
Well, good evening, council. As you know, this is our annual time to review our prior year audit and Carol with Louder Milk Church Company is here to, what I say, you do the good use. So we'll just give it to her and let her do her thing. I'll try not to take no more than three minutes.
We tried to bribe Carol before the meeting to make it short, but no, Carol, take as much time as you need.
Okay. Your audit has been sent to the LGC and it has been approved by the LGC. You received an unqualified opinion of what they require and I'm just gonna go over the highlights, like two, three page thing, go over that and then if anybody has any additional questions or anything, I'll entertain those. The general fund is your main operating fund and at the end of the year, you had 16 million 086, 978 of total assets, which is an increase of about $2 million. The majority of that is an increase in cash. Your fund balance at the end of the year was $14 million 081, which is an increase of a little over $2 million. Your fund balance reserved for streets, which would be your power bill, was $437,000. You received this year a little about $384,000 with power bill and since then about $75,000. And, no, you didn't spend any good change, sorry. You received $384,000 in power bill, sorry. Total revenue at the year was $19 million 757. You budgeted $18 million 8, so you were really close to a million dollars over what you had budgeted and you have an increase of about $4.5 million. And the majority of that is adwaren taxes, increase of about $2 million, sales tax increase of about $200,000. Your investments were up about $300,000. And then you had a donation, I think you had several donations of property during the year, some land and stuff. So that helped to contribute to that. Your expenditures were $18 million 589, which was an increase of about $3.5 million. But you had budgeted $20 million, but you only spent 18, so you're about a million and a half less. Your revenues over and under expenditures were $1 million 168, $395,96. Your other income is $1.4 million and that consists of issuance of new debt and leases of about a little over a million dollars and transfers in from the water and sewer of about $400,000. You had an increase in fund balance of $2 million 583,968. And your inventory increased $7,000. Your adwaren taxes collected was $7.9 million compared to $5.8 the year before. Your percent collected is 98.71, which is a good percentage. Your investment income was $668,000, nearly $330,000 increase from the prior year. You do have an increase in cash, but also the rates and stuff increased and I think you did a little bit of different investing this year, which increased that. Your available fund balance without power bill is 70.22%. With power bill, 71.55%. 8.33% is what it takes for one month to cover one month's worth of expenditures is what the LGC says. The minimum threshold for town your size is 25%. You're at 71.55% and average per similar unit is 46%. So you're above the threshold in your units around your size, so you're doing very good in that sense. Anybody have any questions on the general fund? Moving on with the water and sewer fund, your total assets at the end of the year were $34 million 655 and that's an increase of about $975,000. That's due to an increase in cash and also to a decrease in fixed assets due to depreciation. Your net position at the end of the year was $30 million, which is an increase of about $900,000. Your operating revenues was $8 million 765, which is an increase of $628,000. And most of that was tax fees and I think that's due to some new development. And your operating expenses were $8 million 212,000, which is an increase of $491,000. And that looked like it's contributed to supplies, repairs, chemicals and I think some... some salary increases. You had an operating income of 553,000. Your non-operating revenue expenses was 804,000 and that's made up of interest income of about 400,000, donation of some property, 510, and then interest expense on your debt of 43,000. You had a transfer out to the general fund of 369,000. Your change in net position was 988,740, which is an increase of about 740,000 from the year before. Your accounts receivable at the end of the year is 695,000. Your investment income was 399,000 and that's an increase of about 150,000, which adds your rates and increase in cash. And your available fund balance is 99.43% in the water fund. Your electric fund, you had assets at the end of the year of 12 million 329, which is an increase of a little over a million dollars and the majority of that is cash. Your net position at the end of the year was 10 million 481,823. Your operating revenue was 7 million 933 and that was your mainly your sales were up and I think that was mostly probably weather related this past year. Your operating expenses were 7.1 million, which was just very close to what the year before. Your operating income is 789,000. Your non-operating revenue is 296,000 and majority of that is interest earned on your investments. You transferred out to the general fund 34,351 and your change in net position was 1 million 52,000, which was an increase of about 170,000 from the year before. Your accounts receivable is 582,000 and your interest income, your investment income was 297,494, which is an increase of about 140,000. And your available fund balance in the electric fund is 85.93%. So you have a good available fund balance in both funds and you actually added to fund balance in all those funds this year. And then you have your component unit, which is a tourism authority, and your total assets is 568,000, which that's mainly cash and a little bit of fixed assets. And then your total cash for all funds was 30 million 271,442. And then your restricted cash is 916,000 and that's made up of power bill, restricted cash, and some federal asset seizure and also deposits, utility deposits. That comes to 916,000. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? The LGC required a few years ago, it's called a unit data form, and in that we put in basically kind of all the information from the audit and has a lot of questions in it too and then it kind of looks like, like if there's any kind of areas. And there's two areas, two things that y'all will have to apply to as a board. One of them is the water and sewer asset condition. It's less than 50%. I think we had this last year, it's 0.31. And I know that y'all have the AIA grants that you're doing and looking at those, so that's probably, you know, a response to that. And the other one was that your audit was late getting to the LGC. Our firm had a cyber attack and we were out of commission for about over two months. And we still made the meeting on time, but it was a challenge just to get, to get stuff kind of completed and so that is, that is our fault, but you have to respond to that. And Pam does have a letter from our firm and the LGC was notified, you know, that we had a few audits that would be late just because we didn't, didn't have the access to our computers.
I was about to say that was y'all's fault, but.
Well, not necessarily our fault.
Fortunate being involved in this.
Yes. But you'll have to, that would be, you know, if it was our, because we couldn't access them.
Richie, where it's got, this is just for me. Cash and investments. What kind of investments are we talking about there?
You have, you have cash with the.
North Carolina Cash Management.
We're limiting on what we can invest.
Yeah, you're, you're limited, the state has laws that limits you what you can invest in. But you had at the end of the year, North Carolina Cash Management of 17 million 666,000 and then you did some new investing this year, I think it's called North Carolina Class, and you had $200,000 worth of investments with, yeah, they, the state statutes limits what stuff that you can invest in, but they, everything was paying better this year.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? And I know I just had, you just got the audit this evening, so if there's, you know, you go through the audit and, or you go through this and think, well, I wish I'd have asked that, you know, just phone call away, don't mind answering a question if, you know, or, you know, if I need to come back to, you know, address something more formally, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
And I will make this comment about Carol. I've worked with a lot of auditors over the years, different jobs, and I swear, Carol, you're the easiest to work with.
Thank you.
I promise it's the best presentation.
It was over three minutes?
No, no, no. Years ago when I first done this business, it would be about 30 minutes and, yeah.
Keep working on it. You've been three.
But a lot of the investments, a lot of the, the financials, it's, it's directly attributable to.
Your staff.
Yes.
It's your staff, because we couldn't do, we couldn't do the work that we do if it wasn't for the quality of work that they give us to work with.
So, so just as a recap, what, income that the city has made on investments this year?
Uh, let's see. Okay, in the general fund, it was 668,000, I can't, that's on my hands. And the water fund, that was 399,000, so that's a little over a million. And the electric fund was nearly 300,000, so probably somewhere between, right, close to probably 1.4.
Okay. So Pam, I'd say you're well worth your time.
Need to pay for these, right?
But you know, we're talking about this the other day, the, the fund balances, you know, that's, I, I can't say enough and thank Pam for, for keeping us on the straight in there, because I'd much rather see a, a healthy fund balance than operate in, with a deficit.
Yeah, because you never know what tomorrow is, you know, it's nice to have a cushion there.
Yes.
And now we're talking, we, state used to call it rainy day fund, you know, but, but that fund balance, we, we want it to be healthy.
And one of the things, as y'all know, we've, we've got City Park that we're going to have to fund and also the new public service center. But with the additional monies that we're, we're getting this year and hopefully with additional monies that we'll get next year, there is a chance we may go to cash flow that and so we wouldn't have to go into debt. And now that is, that will be, you know, our objective is to try to do that. I can't guarantee that, but that would be nice to be able to do those two main projects, major projects, and not have to go into debt. So, and we've been able to do that because, you know, watching, watching pennies here or there, those base hits turn into home runs quickly.
And because your revenue came in over what you budgeted, your expenses came in under what you budgeted?
What about, is, is that got, the rail trail, completion of the rail trail? Does that have anything to do with, I mean, as far as financing?
Well, now, are you talking about like the phase four?
Yeah.
That right now, like I say, it's, it's on a long-term plan, but we've got two other park projects that are forward, so, and they'll, and they'll have to be funded as well. But ultimately, yes, it'd be nice to be able to hook the laboratory and have, have that. I, I, I know Carolyn at the Red Trail, who was very active with our first three phases, I, I think that the, the, the roadblock they hit is funding and, and the lack of funding.
And you got to remember, a lot of that's also in the county.
Yeah.
It's not city property, so we will have to come up with a, a cooperation with the county commissioners to complete that phase.
How much further we got to go before we get to the county?
Gene's at a mile, that last leg. Now, we own a good bit of it, purchased one, right?
I think our portion is like close to a mile.
Yeah.
I think it's 1.7 total between the city and the county.
Some of that would have to be negotiated with the railroad company.
Yeah. That's a good time right there.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And next item, while we're talking about finances, let's, let's just turn it back over to Pam.
Well, I'm, I'm here to give you a budget amendment where I want to increase our budget by 4, 248,537. If you look at your budget amendment, the majority of this is, as Carol mentioned, most of this is investment interest on all funds. But we did have some kind of oddball things that came in this, this month. The, the police department received some additional funding for the controlled substance types, which is not normally this amount of money, but they received a little over $6,600. So that will help them with their drug enforcement type things. So that was, that was a nice push for, for them. Our power bill, second installment came in. We only get two in, in a year and this is the second one, but it was over our original budget and we, our true up was a hundred, a little over $102,000. Those funds go towards the paving of our city streets. And we also re-received our, one of our last reimbursements for our AIA grant for the water department. We're almost to the point, we're waiting on McGill to finish that, we're almost to the point, we'll finalize that. And as I stated before, try to go for some big funding in front of the state for some additional infrastructure, which is what Carol mentioned about our performance indicators is one of our water and sewer things we have to work on, that's what that grant's for. But that was a reimbursement that we need to pay McGill for some of their services. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but the majority of this is investment income other than the two that I just stated.
Are we doing good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget ordinance.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pam. And next, I'll turn it over to Tanya about a proposed policy.
Yes, we have a policy based upon the activities of the police department. So in your packet, you had an information page. Chief Green has been very busy working on grants. We talked about cops grants before, now we're looking at another grant that he is working on. There's a lot of work that goes into these grants and a lot of documents are required. And in going through what this particular grant required was a whistleblower policy. And that's why you have a draft in your packet, because for this grant application, it required us to have this type of policy in place. There's, like I said, a draft, it was drafted off of a sister city's policy that they had put in place with some tweaks to, of course, have our type of wording in it. And at this time, that's what we're asking for is that the policy could flow in place so that we have it and it will let him be in compliance with the items that are needed for his grant application. This particular grant application is for $150,000, which has to do with mental health programs. They currently have an intern that is working with them embedded into the PD, but going forward, I believe this is a grant that if they're approved for it, will assist them in getting someone that may be more permanent over a long term instead of an intern that they've got. So I just am asking if you have any questions about the policy? I'll go for it for you.
So the policy sets up protections for people who.
Who potentially believe they are seeing some sort of misuse of public services.
What is, what are the protections, I guess, for people who are getting the whistle blown on that?
That is towards the end, oh, the protection for the people that are getting the whistle. We are, we would do an investigation in accordance with the policy. It has to be reported through the chain of command that's listed there. We would do an internal policy, investigation of that and based upon whatever is found is how we would go forward, because this is probably, we're looking at potential employees that may be involved in whatever is perceived as being a misuse.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we have a progressive disciplinary process in our personnel policy on how we handle misconduct.
Yeah, and it, and it should be there. There should be a policy of this in place, but there also should be just safeguards to make sure, because you can, you can tell.
But our personnel policy does protect that to a degree as well. One thing I want you to understand, because, you know, and it should be in this policy, if that allegation is, is against the city manager or HR, then it goes to the city attorney.
City attorney, right.
But that's, that's actually the way it should be, so.
And in our personnel policy, if there's things that occur, that employees have grievances against the manager or myself, then that goes to the city attorney to investigate.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the whistleblower policy.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Okay, now, oh, Trent, come out and tell us an update from the young room and especially, no, Jill asked if we could limit you to three minutes, no?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to, we unmute the mic.
He lay that way.
It is unmuted, it's unmuted.
And I'll say this while Trent's coming over to the podium, the apple drop, it was, and I have said this publicly several times now, I, I thought the apple drop was the best conducted activity that I've seen the city do.
It's fantastic, yeah.
I appreciate, I mean, a lot of kids, a lot of fun activities.
I mean, but it's also thanks to yourself, Council, Richie, ELA, all the investments we've made. I, you know, to hear everything that the positive we got, especially about the train. I mean, you know, it, who knew that was going to make that big difference? I mean, I knew it was going to be fun, but it has become a thing that like people from around us in different counties know about it, like the people, I had a friend that lives in Asheville, she was like, y'all have a train? And I was like, yeah, wow, like how did you, what? And she was like, yeah, I, I heard about, I saw some pictures and she was like, I, she knew I lived here, so the first thing she did, she sent me a message and just asked me about it. And she was like, well, when can we come ride? And I was like, next special event. You know, it's one of the crazy things. But it's, I mean, I, I, I'm so glad that, you know, it's appreciated because the work that went into it from our committee, all the people involved, I mean, it's, it's no small feat, especially as what we, you know, from where this started, you know, back in 2018. And that's where, you know, I made a little presentation for you, just so you can understand, you know, I, I, I've come in, you were really, you know, you were here at the very beginning and like, you know, and, and there was a couple of years for COVID that we didn't have it. And so, you know, to see what it was to what it is now, you know, and it's, like I said, everybody's involved in like the funding that we get, you know, whether it was from the city or it was LTA, many of you, we also had sponsorships. I mean, you know, all these people care about the community and they're investing into it. So I, you know, I'll run through this, just so we can get a good idea of it, you know, like I said, background is, you know, it started in 2018. You know, the crowd size, when we see, you know, we look back, just, you know, kind of roughing it with estimates, you know, with pictures, it's 500 people. That's still not bad. I mean, you know, we're a city of 10,000. I mean, you know, you're still, you know, at that point in time, you start thinking about like, that's 5% of your population coming out, you know, on, you know, on one evening night. You know, at that time, all it was is, hey, we had charitable shooters, we had a DJ, we had some face painting, we had two food vendors, and then the apple drop. That was it. It took place. That was it, it took place on the courthouse lawn. It was a great start, it was a moment of like, where, you know, as a city we recognize, like, we could do something for families and like, let's give people something to do and, you know, come together. That was a great way to, you know, start it. This is what the first year kind of looked like. Sorry, there's too many pictures out there of it, so you get a picture of me and my daughter Caroline, when she was one, and my wife. But I mean, you know, it's nothing spectacular, but everybody's still having fun, and that's really the main thing. Right here, when we came to this part, that's where I think, Ed, because you've been a part of it since day one, you start seeing what it could be, you saw the excitement, you see everyone who's been, you know, who was there, who was having a good time. Even if it is just walking around talking to people that you know. I, you know, I, you know, I enjoy that. More than anything, my wife makes fun of me, because like, she's like, you like to just go out, because you know you're going to talk to half the people. She absolutely hates me. But y'all all get the same thing, right? You know, it's a time where you get the feedback from the rest of the community about how it's going. So we jumped from there to two years ago. Two years ago is when our committee, Richie came to us and said, hey, can y'all help Laura Morris, as the Young Adult Steering Committee, can y'all come to help her? You know, we have a bigger plan, we have this thought of what this event can be. We said, yeah, we would love to, because we were, you know, as Young Adult Steering Committee at that point in time, we were giving feedback. You know, there was ideas that, you know, that were coming from council, from Richie, you know, and trying to get that master plan of like, what's our future, you know, three, five, 10 years? What, you know, what do we see as the group of, you know, young adults who are that 25, maybe 45, you know, who have your kids? What can we do? You know, we want to bring people in, we want, you know, that's how we grow. I will still Malita thing for today, because I saw Cliff, and John's right there, if we're not growing, we're dying. And we recognized that, and said, all right, you know, we want to get younger, how do we bring these families in here? How do we show off the city? This is when it happened in 2013. We went from 500 to 1,500 people. You know, we tripled. That was just the rough estimate, and even at that time, you know, two years ago, when we talked about it, we were like, you think it was that many people? I'll go back to this day, and I'll say like, I think it was closer to two. But we saw the big change, because we had people in the community outside of like, just, you know, Lauren and her little team. It was Young Adult Steering Committee, you had sponsorships from local businesses, you know, that people started buying into it. All of a sudden, we get snow machines, yeah, we have a DJ, we have more giveaways than we ever had, we have balloon artists, face painting, we started running games, the charitable shooters still there, now we even created the Theater Guild, they brought people. Apple Queen and her full court, and just, instead of just being Apple Queen, our vendors, you see how much, you know, we went from two to seven. And that just happened over a couple of years span. We had COVID in between, this was the hardest one, because this is coming out of COVID, this is the, you know, the one that was really, everybody, look, come and enjoy downtown, come see what we have to offer. And they showed up. As you plan these things, I think, you know, I always sit there and worry like, do we reach enough people, are people going to know about it? And these pictures, you get to see the frozen characters from Theater Guild. You see what the snow looked like when we lit it up on the courthouse lawn. This is a picture from the DJ booth for Eric Taylor. You can see the lineup stuff, you can see the apple background, there's not too many spots on that ground that you can see. All you see are people. Those are people that may live here at that point, you know, they may be traveling in. But once again, they saw a community that was coming together and they wanted to celebrate together, and we gave them opportunity. Ed with a sweet hat, know how to take, put that picture up there. But as you look out across, I mean, I've got to give it, Ashley, Ashley, two years ago, the bubble guns. You know, Ashley sat up on stage with two bubble guns and just doing this for like 30 minutes. I mean, you know, her fingers, it was permanently stuck. But it's that bottom right picture that makes you realize why you do it. To see the amount of kids who are out there enjoying it, and, you know, the free giveaways, while I guess we spend a good amount of our budget towards those, there's a lot of kids, I mean, like, you know, when they go out on these things, they don't get things, we give them to them for free. And it's amazing that when you get up on that stage and you look out and you see all the twinkling lights. Because you know it's at least one kid that's their nights made. No one has spent anything. But that's because of everybody's investment into, into the apple drop. Also, I put a picture of Taylor eating, because like, she couldn't move for like two days after this, because like, she face painted the whole entire night away. You know, this is just a small, you know, picture of what our group looked like at the end of the night, you know, putting everything up. Now we come to this past year. This past year, is that better year, Ed? The numbers don't lie. This year was fully for the Young Adult Steering Committee. It was, you know, it was fully our baby to take, you know, for it to happen or not. Crowd side, easy estimates, 3,300 to 4,000 people. I'll talk about it here in a second, because as y'all, as city council, y'all invested in Pacer AI. It was able to give us pings to see how many people were downtown during that time. We always talk about like, you know, how many people were at that event, like, where'd they come from? We have that data now. We can show what that investment does, why, you know, how we're bringing people in from outside, how and how many people. The best part was we were able to raise the highest amount of cash donations in the history of the event. That will, you know, over $1,000 will go to the Leane County Animal Services and Hesse House. Those are the two groups this year that we designated, you know, to get that money. While everything's free, we do ask for donations, and it goes to great organizations that help our community. Next year, we, you know, we plan to beat that number very easily, we've already talked about things we're going to do better. Because we want to help, you know, we want to continue to see the health of the city, the county, our community get better. All of a sudden, my type had to get a lot smaller, right? That's how much stuff we had, we moved to Main Street, still got a DJ, the train, the train, the train, the train. Sounds like LTA's got enough money, we can buy two trains now. I'm just going to go put that out, like, nobody needs to come here and sing my summer for $7,000 when I heard that number. We need to have two trains at this point in time. Gaming truck was there for older kids, we had other games with Cook Reynolds, still face painting, we had temporary tattoos. We brought in professional face painters, because we recognize that like, we as a group, we could do it, but we're not very good at it. To see kids with full face masks and like, you know, my daughters had the full unicorn look, you know, it's awesome. Because once again, you know they're having fun. That line was out of control, and one of the things I got, you know, I got told, you know, as the chair, what I need to do better job is, I need to do better at line management. I just, we didn't expect to have 50 people in line to get their face painted, not professionals. Oh God, I made a mistake on that one, I'll take that mistake, because that means it was better than expected. We have the snow machines again, we tripled our giveaways, tripled them. And guess how many we had at the end of the night? Zero. Everything was gone. I'm sure I'm still going to be like, maybe taken out in the middle of the night on the street, because all the horns I gave away, and how many people just love that noise all night long of hearing little kids blow horns. But we also had princesses, we had balloon artists, we had charitable shooters, Apple Queen and her court. Now look at it, our vendors, we go up to eight now, six food and beverage, one retail, and then we have one that didn't show up. We really could have used them, but they didn't. But the bigger part here is that right there, downtown merchants. We had two restaurants and five retail, stayed open on this night of all nights, and decided to bet on us as the city and also as a committee to make sure, saying that we are going to have a great apple drop. They had, talking to Kurt Vittles, you know, he was upset with me at the very beginning, he was like, wow, the world would you get, you know, we can handle all the food, you know, anything. I was like, no you can't. You're not, I was like, just get ready for it, it's going to be, it's three hours of hell. He told me the other night, he was like, yeah, you were right. The wooden spoon who just opened up, they sold out. We have retail shops that people went into that they didn't know even existed. Those things were helping small businesses, we're helping downtown, we're getting the foot traffic. Whether it was that, you know, them ride the train and see the pickle fetish open, or whether or not, you know, they're at with the Apple Queen and her court, and they go to Just Getting Around, which is right behind it. Steer South was open, I mean, we have all these places that people got to explore that maybe they'd never seen before. And that's the big payback for it. This is the numbers, this is where we talk about like, when it comes from, you know, Pacer AI. Visits 2.9, 2.9 thousand. This is during that time period of five to eight on December 31st. This is where that number of 3,300 or 4,000, it just all depends on like, if you look, you know, it's how many kids came with each person, right? If you just say it's one kid, you know, for every two people, okay, well, easily we're, you know, like, we creep up to 4,000 pretty quickly. Richie, I know I'm missing something else on this, because I didn't put all the data in here, because I mean, it's really awesome to see it. But we pulled people from Gaston County, Cleveland County, Incaton.
That's the best part of it, is actually shows you where those people were coming from. And we had a higher concentration from more, I would say, in the Maiden area and the Denver area than you'd expect. And across the county, it wasn't just the 28092, it was throughout the county. And we saw that with Santa's Village as well.
Yeah.
Talked to a lot of people from Denver, Iron Station, Pumpkin Center, so, and that's what we want, we want to bring those dollars into the city. And I agree with Trent in his return on investment.
Absolutely. And I think we get it, I mean, we easily can say it's three or fourfold, you know, for what was put into it. The funny part, one thing that went on here, it shows you like places people went afterwards. There was like four McDonald's, like, you know, McDonald's and Waffle House, that was the places. But this is what it looked like this year. This top left picture was at 520. And I was freaking out, because I was like, where's everybody at? Why aren't people here? I look back and I laugh, because I'm like, there was a good amount of people already there at 520. My daughters, our neighbor Sloan, top right, you can see our giveaway, you know, Rudy, Jennifer down there, and then there's Shelby. Getting ready for it. You get overrun by kids, man, like, you know, they're not patient, they want their stuff. This is what it started looking like, as we get closer to six o'clock hour, that top left picture, it started to fill in. You start seeing everybody getting their face painted. I saw more pictures of adults on that train than I saw kids. This ain't for those kids, you know, it's awesome that it was big enough that like, everybody was able to get on there, no matter, you know, no matter your size. Ed, once again, looking good, what's your Apple Queen? You had a dance party going on. But that's the picture. That's your wide shot of it all. This is at right about seven o'clock, up on the stage, everybody's gathering up there. There's not one spot where you see asphalt. The amount of investment that was made paid off, because we saw people downtown going to like our shops, our restaurants, taking pictures, posting them, showing off our city. I can't say thank you enough. Because for someone who has two small children, I'm always looking for something to do. This brings so much happiness to not just people my age, it's everyone who comes downtown. Our group right after everything's said and done. After I walked 30,000 steps in pants that were too small. This is just feedback, I put it out there, I put it out on the cesspools that are in the town talks, Leane, it's in Denver and Charle. And I said, hey, tell me, was it, what can we do better? 147 comments later, we have four comments that are, I'll tell you, they're like, oh, wasn't the best, you know? All right, 147 minus four, all right, 143 comments, just like this. They came from Dallas, amazing time. One of the biggest things that we saw is people saying this, I hate we missed it this year, seems like everyone here does get better. We appreciate this so much for families who want to get home, it's such an amazing family friendly event. Y'all hear it from me all the time, because I'm in it and I love the city, I love everything that we do. But now, I want y'all to see the other random people who have, that don't come to these things and don't talk to you. They're taking their time, they're putting it out there, they're promoting this event better than we are. The location's fantastic, it's awesome. One thing that we didn't even think about, and I'm glad it worked out, was somebody that had a child that had special needs, and they even were able to enjoy their time. We didn't think about that, we talked about all the different age groups and everything, we didn't think about them, and that was our fault. But it worked out, because as they say right there, they absolutely loved the event. This is just a short thing. First and foremost, thank you to Betty Floor. She took us underneath her wing, DDA, she already had a lot going on inside this village. But she helped give us direction. The members of our Young Adult Steering Committee. It doesn't happen unless we're all, you know, fully committed. We take times away from our families every month to meet, to figure out what we can do better, and how we can help the city, our community in general. LTA gave us, you know, some of the funding, mayor, council, y'all saw, you know, energy, y'all saw what this could be and what you wanted it to be, and you put your money where your mouth is, to an extent. Still haven't got enough money to get my laser light show, but, you know, we can get there this year, don't you worry. Local roots on tap both helped, you know, by giving us chairs, letting us store stuff at their place. Lecture department. I will say, last month I messed up. Somebody makes me talk every, you know, 103 minutes. Hey, I'm just saying, because I was upset, because I forgot a very important person. Come here BT, come here BT. This man helped tremendously, if BT doesn't come out there, him and Teddy, last two years.
This is the longest three minutes I've ever been through.
I just want to let you know, here's your apple, because your apple were hot. They want you to put this up, you know, like, up there in your office, this is your start, no, 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 you just take your apple. Say I love you, Tim. And we also want to get a certificate, the certificate right here, of BT, for his dedication to the city of Leane, his apple drop, ensuring the Young Adult Steering Committee was able to drop it like it's hot.
Everybody has seen irony in him giving me this forbidden fruit. We were working on hanging the moon, but I don't know what that award would look like coming from him. So now we're just going to work on hanging him.
Yeah, I believe there was one person on one of the comments that said, you know, it'd been funny if we dropped you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know, and looking at y'all, you'll know that he's a 75 RPM record, I'm a 33. So I hope you can understand why I'm so excited.
It's profit, you're.
We appreciate you, BT. Yeah, I, you know, want to make sure that, you know, you're going to say how much you appreciate.
How old are you today?
Oh, yeah.
Well, happy birthday, do we all need to say happy birthday to you too?
No, I'll throw the apple away.
Happy birthday to you too. Public Works, Street Department, everything they came out and did, putting up barricades, getting stuff out, trash cans. Recreation Department, Nathan. You let me come and rent your apartment every year for, you know, a couple of days, I greatly appreciate it. Especially, you know, letting Karen sit there and go through things with me, and, you know, and you could easily be like, all right, get out, let her do some work. If it wasn't for her and the amount of time, you know, there's a lot of these things, the graphics and stuff, it wouldn't have happened. So I appreciate you, you know, you investing into us and letting us, you know, take time away from her, you know, on her regular stuff and helping out. And the other, you know, employees that came out and helped, without them, I mean, we're lost, because they do all the games. Student Advisory Council, there's about 10 of them that came out, you know, and they said you did a fantastic job coordinating that. City of Leane Police, Fire Department. Yeah, I mean, it's, I can't say thank you enough for the things that y'all do. Yeah, I mean, it's, I can't say thank you enough for the things that y'all do, for all these special events, and like, I know you have families just like everybody else, and you wanna be, you'd rather be with them than hanging out with us out on the street, you know, watching, you know, an event take place.
Hate to run it from later.
Todd Olmore, this department, thank you again, sir. Todd came out there, he wasn't even working, him and Chief, you know, helping us do things. It's that commitment that you can't buy, it's people who care, they wanna make sure that we put our best foot forward, and that we're investing in the right things. We have those people. Y'all are those people, thank y'all. To our conductor, you, we did not, I forgot to give you your sweatshirt at, at, at Apple Drop. So, Mr. Conductor, here you go, says your official Young Adult Steering Committee, and then, you know, just like it said on the back, just so you have BT, drop like the tie, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
That is it. I'm, you know, I'm taking up all the time for the rest of the year that I'm allowed to speak, but it was well worth it.
Well, thank you for all the work you guys put into it and young adults, thanks for letting me come sit in on some of that, the planning, it was fascinating, there's a lot that goes into it, guys, there really is, so.
And that's the crazy thing, you don't really think, you're just like, that's it, that's a great event, you know, like, how difficult can it be? Next thing you know, you're like, oh wow, there is, you know. I, you know, it really, you know, it's quite a bit that goes into it, but at the same time, there's so many people within the city who are part of it, who make sure it happens. Because there are things that like, I don't know, that, you know, all of a sudden Ashley will jump in and say, hey, we need to do this, 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 okay. I, you know, I, I always say Ashley Jones and Taylor Eady drag me across the finish line and make me look good, because they are two of the best type A personalities in all the world, the details are there, and it's those people that, yeah. And I know Clay's probably gonna kill me at some point because I take Ashley away, like, you know, we, we do so much involvement, so hopefully it'll get a little better. But we're gonna continue to see it grow. And if there's ever anything, you know, that y'all have an idea of us, let us know. We're always looking for something better, you know, and make it better. All right? Thank y'all so very much.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you, Trent. And something that I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and Jill reminded me of this, Chief Green, thank you for everything that you did today.
Yes, sir. It wasn't me, it was my people.
Well, it was, it was everybody, everybody, you.
They worked hard, so.
You took a, what potentially could have been a real dangerous, terrible event, and you managed it. Thank you.
Thank you, I will let my guys know.
Please do. Okay, next item on the agenda, I'll turn it over to Richie for resolution.
Yeah, and this, this is something we do every year, um, as, as y'all know, if someone or there's unpaid taxes, and that's advertised in the paper, and this just gives Susan the authority to do that, because they do collect on that.
Have we got it?
Yeah.
We got a paper?
No, it'll be, it'll be in the paper, they advertise it in the paper, it just, it allows people to see that there's, there's unpaid taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we still got a link to that.
Uh, once, once a week.
Once a week.
Wednesday.
Well, we're going more to an online, but, you know, we still have it once a week.
Well, if it's online, you're on, I buy paper for it.
Okay, I entertain a motion. Get Paul Hanes.
Resolution by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, and I don't see Chief Hebner.
We've got, we've got a replacement.
Rusty, come on up. This is a, a new fire setter intervention program?
Yeah, good evening, um, we got Terry Rats, that's gonna come up and make a presentation. Um, this is a, a program that we're, it's been working on it for a while, but it's still kinda in an infant stage, as you know, you know, police and fire and all those, we're in the prevention business more than we are in the firefighting business now, and, and one of the programs that we're trying to get off the ground is a juvenile fire setter intervention program, and, uh, that's part of community risk reduction, and it's, it's a big thing in our community. And, uh, Terry has taken this on as a project and worked really hard, and he's done a lot of research and, uh, met with a lot of people, some of the partners that we have, uh, Child Advocacy Center, the Health Department, Lincoln County Schools, and those different agencies are, are helping us to bring all that community together so we can have the most outreach. So we're just here tonight to try to bring awareness to the program and, uh, you know, make, let everybody know that, that we're working towards this, something we hadn't had in several years, and, uh, you know, we don't always hear about when a juvenile might be having those type of issues, it doesn't make the news because it wasn't a giant fire, but, uh, this'll give us an opportunity to do some mentoring, to steer folks in, in the right direction and prevent that. So I'm gonna ask Terry to come up, and I, as he's beginning his talk, I've got some handouts, I don't believe y'all had in your pocket, and I'll hand y'all out. Uh, this is Terry Rats.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to come and give you a brief description of the youth fire setter provision and intervention program. Uh, City of Lincoln was, sent me to class in Raleigh for six days to, to go over this class to learn about it, I had no clue about this class, but it kinda hit home because I have a nine-year-old girl at home, and I do not want her to be involved in any kind of arson or to be hurt in any kind of way. Uh, basically what this program is, is, uh, it's an assessment. This program assesses the youth fire setter behavior, understanding the motivations, which would be curiosity, experimentation, emotional distress, uh, that's behind it. A risk assessment helps determine the level of intervention needed. We know today, in today's time, these kids go through a lot of, they see a lot of stuff and they go through a lot of things, and how they cope with it potentially could be a fire. Uh, and that's what we're trying to prevent. Education, education about the fire safety is our core part of our program, if we can get to our youth and, and teach them the prevention part of the fire thing, hopefully the intervention part won't have to come. Behavioral interventions for youth who exhibit fire setting behavior due to emotional or psychological issues, this program provides counseling or therapy. Uh, the goal is to address the underlying causes of the behavior such as trauma, anger, or family issues. Our goal is to, to prevent, like I said, to prevent this from happening, but this program has an intervention piece in it. And that intervention piece, we would talk to said youth and their, and their parents or guardians, and get them on board and send them through a program that is held at the fire department. Family involvement, you know, we're gonna reach out to the parents too, not all parents, not all adults know about fire prevention, they don't know what fire is capable of, so that's our job as the Fire Department to, to do that. Uh, collaboration with other agencies, I would like to recognize Child Advocacy and the Health Department that are here tonight, uh, they have been a huge asset to this program along with the school, uh, school system and 4H and the Cooperative Extension. We have reached out to a lot of people and they have given a lot of input. Following up and, and monitoring, after this program, after we get this program up and running and we have an incident, uh, there will be some monitoring, monitoring afterwards. Uh, so let's just say it may be a three-month monitor or a month monitor, depending on how serious the kid may have, what he had, what the kid may have done, or would determine how close we monitor the kid after the program. Hopefully we never have to use the intervention piece of it, that's what our prevention side of it is gonna be focused towards. But I wanna throw this out too, Catawba County, I've been going to meetings in Catawba County, they are, they've reached out to us, we've reached out to them, we've coincided together, um, we, it's, it's a binding agency, I guess, so to say, we're working together real close with them as well, so they're, they're willing to help us as well in this program. The overall youth fire setter intervention program aims to reduce the risk of future fire-related incidents, protect the youth and the community, and provide long-term behavioral solutions. So that is all the information I have for you all, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer the questions that you have.
I'm shocked for the, the statistic for the two-thirds.
Two-thirds, that's what I was looking at.
All fires are started by kids.
And that, that's a national average.
Wow.
So going, going a little further with this program, you know, with the city, how many fires do we have that are started by kids? Do we really know? We don't have the facts, we don't have the information. This program would provide that as well, there are systems already in place, uh, it's called Vision 2020, it's online, that you can go in and record your incidents, uh, to keep track of that.
Thank you. All right.
Very good.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And thanks to the other cooperating partners, because that's, that's what's gonna make it successful. But, uh, thanks to everybody that's involved with it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Richie, I'm gonna turn it over to you about, uh, ABC Board requesting surplus property.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a request from the ABC Board, uh, they're in the process of actually hiring, um, an officer that, uh, would handle some of their, their matters as far as bars, restaurants, uh, would also be in their store, uh, doing some prevention, uh, there. But, um, their request is actually for the vehicle, um, so looking at our stock, uh, we have one that's, uh, a vehicle that we've used downtown some, and, but it definitely needs a new wrap, so it's, it's something that we're gonna require them to do is wrap it and, and make it be identified as the ABC Board vehicle or officer, so it would not look like our vehicle. Generally speaking, David Ramsey says we'd get about 4,000 for a vehicle like that, considering they're gonna have to spend probably $800 to get it wrapped, I felt like, um, a, a value of about $3,200 would be acceptable. That would get them a vehicle, and it's, it's only got like 53,000 miles, so no more than it's gonna be driven, it's probably something that'll last them for a long time. But that's our recommendation to Council, uh, we are allowed to do that because they are a nonprofit or a government agency, so that, those two things allow us to, to do that transaction. But I, I think, you know, we've done this in the past with different things, whether it's the county or the school system, uh, fire departments, as you know, we, we've done it with fire departments as well, so I'd make that recommendation that we sell to the ABC Board for 3,200.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ricky's recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. And Richie, drop that at you.
All right. Well, um, cause we're in wintertime, the dates aren't as bad as they have been, but, uh, just a reminder, we've got First Friday Recycling, um, tomorrow, and then Saturday we have our second Saturday Shop Local. And then I wanted to mention this, we're gonna do a round announcement tomorrow, um, but our annual curb sign leaf pickup ends February 15th, so basically, we're gonna do a, a message to our citizens to let them know that they've got leaves that they wanna rake out, that they need to be out to the curb by the 15th, because our crews will make their final lap, and if you put it out behind them, it's not gonna get picked up and you'll have to bag it. So you'll get a message tomorrow, uh, like you did today about recycling, and it'll, it'll just be just a reminder to those citizens, it's gonna be a nice weekend, if you've got leaves, go ahead and put them out and we'll pick them up next week. I wanna commend the Public Works Department for this season, all the leaves fell at one time, but they were able to keep up with it. Um, we did add the automated leaf truck, uh, and that has been a game changer for us. As y'all know, we were able to secure two for half of what, well, actually, less than half. A new one was gonna be 300,000, we were able to secure two, um, vehicles that had been used by another city for 74,000. So that was, like I said, that was a game changer for us, and we saved money, so it was a win-win. But I just wanted to mention that, they did an excellent job, uh, Nathan and Brad and those guys kept up with it, they, they worked extra days if needed, so I'm just proud of the work they did, and the, you know, like I say, the service they give to our citizens. Also on the 18th of February, the Planning Board, and then y'all received invitations for the, uh, Police Recognition Banquet on the 22nd, so. But if you would RSVP the chief on that, so he'll know whether you're coming or not. Mentioned some of the highlights in the city page, that's just something I, I, I think has been an asset for us, communicating with our, with not only our employees, but also Council. Like to mention, there's a nice thing in there about Johnny, and she has definitely been missed the last few weeks, um, and not only as, you know, just a coworker, but a friend for everybody. And one of the things that I miss is Johnny's life advices. And I don't know if David here tonight, David did an excellent job at the funeral, describing what Johnny meant to the city hall, what he meant to, to each individual, and it was, it was really touching, and, and, and she would definitely be missed. Um, I wanted to mention also in there that we recognize the law enforcement, it was, uh, January 9th was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and then also you'll see some pictures from the Public Works on their snow removal and some sidewalk repair, I know our snow didn't turn out what everybody expected, but, uh, I'm not gonna lie to you, I, I don't care if it snows for next two and a half years, so it's just more work for us. And then, uh, you'll see some pictures in there from Distribution Collections, uh, dealing with freezing temperatures, uh, you know, naturally this time of year, uh, we're dealing with broken mains, uh, I think at one time, how many did you have, Todd? Seventeen's what it had in there, but, uh, that's.
About eighteen.
Yeah, like I mentioned last month, you gotta realize those guys are out there at 18, 20 degrees and they're fitting some water, so it's, it's, it's not fun, and they do an excellent job in maintaining a lot of times aging lines. Wanted to mention a few promotions too, um, Matthew Mendoza promoted the equipment operator, Garrett Von Bargen promoted the police officer two, and then Josh Messick is promoting the firefighter one. And we had two gentlemen, Branson McNeely and Ethan Millwood, who completed the North Carolina Breathing Equipment School Training, uh, that's in that, that city page as well. On our homeless report, we actually, and we know this because of the, the wintertime, we have less incidents and charges, uh, some of, some of those that we see when the, when the weather's nicer, right now probably on somebody's couch. Uh, and we, we see that every year, when it gets hot and gets cold, our numbers will shrink, and as the weather gets better, they, they, they get back to a normal level. Wanted to mention some other business, uh, we will be meeting next week, uh, with the architects on hopefully the final design of the new public service center, and then once that we get that final design, we'll bring it to Council, uh, for approval and then, and then bid that out. So that's moving along, now that we've got kind of a definite budget and, and a definite vision there, it's moving along a lot better. Uh, mentioned City Park before, same thing, I, I hopefully sometime March, April, we'll have that, um, final bid design. I know, I mentioned this in the morning meetup, uh, for the people who want to know where, why the white marks are on the sidewalks downtown, that is part of our ADA compliance, and so we are shaving those trip hazards. Uh, I mentioned also, one trip hazard can cost you a hundred thousand dollars, we've seen that at the city. Uh, so we're gonna continue that, uh, we will, we will be working on those in the next budget year, also, uh, starting to replace some ADA ramps that are either non-compliant, uh, or don't have the braille pad on those, because, you know, that, that is part of the new, the new ADA compliance. So we'll continue that work, and I'll try to keep you updated on where they're gonna, where they're gonna go, and, and they'll give us an idea, they'll give us a map of that. Budget, I'm three Saturdays into it, and so I feel like I've got a, a good idea on revenues, because that's, that's the beginning. Uh, so this Saturday I will start on expenses, and as y'all know, I go through each line item, each expenditure, uh, and try to make sure there's, there's no anomalies that are making it, you know, skew one way or the other, uh, and, uh, then I will start the process of meeting with department heads, uh, making sure that, that their capital needs are met, and any, any staffing needs or increases that could be, um, regulation or so forth. And then as y'all know, April 11th, we'll be sitting in here, uh, finalizing everything hopefully, so. But I'll keep you updated on that, and, uh, last, um, I, I wanna introduce Scott Clark. Scott, if you wouldn't mind coming up, uh, I mentioned this last month, uh, Scott will be starting with us Tuesday, um, as Assistant City Manager, he will shadow me for two weeks, and then he's gonna be spending a week with our department heads, uh, getting to know their departments in and out. So Scott, I'll just give you a brief moment, just introduce yourself.
Yep, thank you, I'm looking forward to the opportunity, uh, my family's very excited to have me much closer to home, I'm excited to put my efforts back into the community in which I live in, so there's a lot of great things in. so there's a lot of great things in Lincoln. I've been here about nine years pushing, um, close to it, so thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to working with everyone, working with employees as well, and the citizens within the community, so thank you.
And, and as we discussed, he's going from an hour and a half one way to four minutes.
It's a, it's definitely a blessing, so thank you, my family's very excited as well, so appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Scott, thank you.
And Scott's office is between Richie and my office. He doesn't stand a chance, but, you know, uh, if you get a chance, come by and, and, uh, sit down and get to know Scott a little bit better.
You gonna be upstairs?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll tell you about all my, my car dealer jokes and everything.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor, that's everything, I know we got closed session, so.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Robby, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, and, uh, John, if you will tell us the reason why, and then I need to ask Mike if he's got any questions.
As some of y'all know, we, uh, can only do closed sessions under very specific circumstances. So in accordance with GS one forty-three, that's for eighteen point eleven, uh, A five in this case. Just having some insurance staff and, uh, certain real estate, and we are gonna act, we're, we're gonna run a little bit of attorney-client privilege stuff under, uh, it's A, A one, I guess, yeah, A one. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a little bit of that as well. So we got two reasons to make a request.
Okay. Mike, you got any questions?
Well, I'm careful, um, can you give me the full name of the officer? You gotta get a coffee.
Carol, what is Carol's license?
And also, when's the last time we had an assistant?
We haven't had an assistant since Richie got.
That's it. Okay. Yep. I was actually the first, yeah. You were the first. Yeah. If you need to take.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, Terry, good job.
Good, thanks.
What's on?
Can you get it for me?
It was way up under there.
I'm gonna, these will last pretty long, so go ahead and order another box.
I still got the first box. I'm assuming that's the middle of your gift, it gets high from the weather, so.
The only time I ever get them out.
Because I.
Miss Mike.
State media or something.
Miss Mike.
Here you go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Recorded to ensure accuracy.
You can always pull it up online.
Well, you're right.